All right, it is seven o'clock, so I will call the meeting to order. And remember this time to start with a roll call vote.
Mayor Wernikoff?
Here.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Here.
Councilmember Al?
Here.
Councilmember Buckby?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
President?
Um, and I wanted to, before we begin, um, make a request, um, to make a adjustment to the order of operations here at the start of the meeting. What we'd like to do, if there, the council is agreeable, is to start with the presentation, and then the town manager report, and then do the oral communications after the town manager report. That way, members of the public have the opportunity to also comment on things in the town manager report. So unless there's any objections, um, we will go with that. Any concerns? All right. With that, then, I would love to welcome our esteemed, um, partners from, uh, the Portola Valley Library to share with us the annual report. Welcome, Carmen.
Carmen, make sure you push the red button. Push the button for her.
Like that? Are we on? Okay, great. Uh, so, good evening, Mayor, uh, Mayor Sarah, oh, I'm still waking up. Mayor and members of the town council. My name is Carmen Motona Adams, and I am the new branch manager for the Portola Valley Library. And I have with me Adrian Gass, who is our new senior librarian for Portola Valley as well. Together, we're going to present the library's annual report for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. So I'm gonna start, uh, to share my screen.
Good evening, I'm Adrian Gass, the new senior librarian, like Carmen said. So our first slide, uh, is about our vision and our mission. Each of our thirteen libraries is unique, but also is a part of our larger family of transformative experiences and a single mission: to strengthen our community by creating an inclusive sense of place and an environment for learning. First established in 1912, the Library Joint Powers Authority was formed in 1999. Our service area covers three hundred and fifty-one square miles and is comprised of eleven member cities and the unincorporated areas of the county. San Mateo County Libraries is uniquely positioned to see the broader county service area while at the same time, understanding each community that we serve. Unique diversity and complexity of those we serve inspire and drive our services. Our staff's diversity mirrors the communities that we serve, helping us incorporate the wisdom of varied lives experiences to better offer inclusive resources, meaningful services, and engaging events. Our goal is to reflect our communities by providing valuable time, space, and tools that they need to feel represented and ready to explore. San Mateo County Libraries provides unmatched services to our community, and we're consistently ranked as one of the best libraries in the nation. Feedback from the community influences our work and strengthens our resolve to provide enlightening, exciting, and essential services. San Mateo County Libraries continues to be a high-performing organization. Some standout statistics include our 1.5 million library visits, which is a 56% increase over last year; 2.3 million items circulated, which is 6% more items checked out; and over 245,000 program and event attendees, which is a 126% increase over last year. More people are participating in our programs, visiting our locations, and checking out our eclectic collection of materials. Here are a few highlights. This year, we saw an impressive 4.3 million Wi-Fi sessions. We served over 40,000 nourishing meals and checked out laptops over 28,000 times. The following charts summarize totals for the Portola Valley Library through year-end of key library services. Portola Valley Library has seen stronger-than-average year-over-year increases in library visitors and program attendance. Our incredible community continues to re-energize us, taking our innovation to new heights. This year, we introduced new programs and initiatives that many in our county met with gratitude and celebration. I'm excited to share a few of our significant achievements featured in this report. This March, we celebrated the first anniversary of our expanded seven-day-a-week service for a total of 36,000 service hours. Expanded evening and weekend hours also provided more in-person opportunities for discovery and support through access to the latest technology, programming, and school and job resources that meet many interests. Additional hours are critical in expanding equitable access to people who work multiple jobs or have non-traditional schedules or attend school. Our brand-new Maker Mobile hit the road this summer, taking maker activities and tech to new horizons. The Maker Mobile is a zero-emission, custom-built vehicle that delivers high-impact maker programs beyond our libraries. Having this vehicle means we can take state-of-the-art technology to more people in more places. Residents who may have never experienced technology like 3D printing and laser cutting can now do so, thanks to this initiative. And then we have a picture of us with the Maker Mobile at the Portola Valley Farmer's Market, where the kids are decorating cookies. And you can't see, the Maker Mobile is behind, I think that's Erica. Yeah. So that was a fun, fun event. We also have Power Up Afternoons, which offers K-12 students opportunities to connect and grow with after-school experiences. These discovery-and-learning-filled afternoons have strengthened our connections with local students and families. Power Up Afternoons has reached thousands of kids, participants enjoyed 2,242 hours of programming, in which creativity and learning were incurred. Ninety-seven percent said they enjoyed the experience of being at the library. The Big Lift Inspiring Summers Program, created to prevent loss in learning that can happen over the summer break, continues to impact the lives of young residents and their families. Through the generous support of the county's Measure K funds, the program has served 960 students this year and has shown strong positive academic gains in both literacy and math across participating school districts. And here's some highlights of, uh, Power Up Afternoons at Portola Valley. We had, um, our New Year's Eve celebration with, um, the mouse from If You Give a Mouse a Cookie by Larmen Numroff. Um, last summer, they had the petting zoo come by. And then, just recently, uh, for Power Up Afternoon, we had Kunameku, who did a dance workshop, um, on Afro-Latinx dance. It was really fun. We also offer more books in more languages. Language is power, and being able to read in your preferred language is invaluable. Through the addition of 29,000 world language items, our communities now have more opportunities to experience linguistic diversity, uh, more opportunities than they have before. Chinese, Hindi, Japanese, Korean, Russian, Tagalog, and Spanish voices are now more represented in our collections. It's part of our commitment to providing equitable access to materials for all, ensuring that community members feel seen and valued. We also started an initiative to advance period equity in our libraries. Supplies like pads and tampons are necessary, uh, are just as necessary as toilet paper and soap, yet they're not readily available, accessible, or affordable. We believe that physical, that physical need shouldn't keep anyone from using our library, so we decided to take action. By offering free menstrual products in all of our libraries, anyone in need can get these necessary resources and continue to use our services. This year, we launched mental health first aid training to continue supporting our communities. Mental health first aid is an initiative making training available to empower community members to respond and provide initial help to support someone who's experiencing a mental health crisis. The training has given our public service staff additional expertise to help someone in need. Through collaboration with several partner agencies, we are now providing direct service to patrons inside our libraries. They're better connecting residents to unemployment assistance, low-income housing eligibility, food assistance, and other safety net services. We're also welcoming back volunteers. We joyfully welcome the return of in-person volunteers this year. Enthusiastic volunteers, friends of the library, and foundation members have generously devoted thousands of hours of their time. Their hours of service are essential to advancing important equity goals, whether signing up to tutor an adult literacy learner, or contributing language skills, and supporting staff with bilingual storytime. Our library champions are our most important organizational asset. This year, we increased library positions and celebrated the return of local teen interns to our libraries for the first time since 2019. I'd like to close the presentation with a short, heartwarming video that highlights our library champions and the incredible services that they provide.
I need to see if I can get the audio. It might work. I use this version. I can share it later, though, with the group. It's also on YouTube. So we will go to the final slide.
Okay. Sorry about that. I want to thank you for allowing Carmen and I this opportunity to showcase some of our incredible accomplishments, and your ongoing support of the Portola Valley Library, uh, means a lot to us. In addition, I would like to recognize and thank the library staff for their tremendous work and creativity, Portola Valley Friends of the Library for their dedication and advocacy, town staff, and the council for your ongoing support, in particular, Mayor Sarah Wernikoff, and Town Manager Sharif Edman, for their work on the Library JPA Governing Board and the Operations Committee. Thank you, and Carmen and I are happy to answer questions that you may have.
Thank you, Adrian and Carmen. I have to say, serving on, sitting on that JPA board, I have loved learning and participating in all the work that you guys do. It's super incredible, so thank you, and thanks for coming out to share this with us tonight. Are there any questions from the council?
Yeah, no, thank you as well for coming. I'm just looking through the sort of services. I was looking at the Wi-Fi sessions and the, um, hotspots, which I know is a really critical function for a lot of families in, in our county. Do you feel sort of like the system is, is, are you keeping up with those requests? Are we giving enough hotspots and Wi-Fi sections, or do you feel like we could do even more in terms of peoples? Because this is, I mean, I know for a lot of people, this is almost a, it's, I mean, well, Wi-Fi, broadband is critical, and this feels like, we've been, is meeting a lot of people's need for that. So I'm just curious if we're sort of keeping up with what you see in the need in the community?
I'll take that one. Yeah, we're always evaluating how many hotspots we have out in the community, and, um, lately, we are working towards having a model of, instead of it being what we consider an in-look item, which is first-come, first-served, um, we're going to make them holdable and reservable. So that means that people can essentially add themselves to a waitlist, and that will allow us to see, you know, in real time what the need is so that we can adjust. But we are, um, always reevaluating, how many do we have out there? How many are people asking for every day? Because people come in and they call every day, um, and we purchase more. Luckily, those hotspots are really not that expensive, um, so it's always something we're trying to grow.
I was just wondering if you could look back to the, the private and reflected, uh...
Mic on.
That reflected what, what you're doing and what's going on in Portola Valley?
Yes.
That went by way too fast for me.
Sorry about that. Give me one second.
Yeah, the data on Portola Valley. Because, well, just to say that it's amazing how the library has transformed, uh, Portola Valley has become a real center, a real hub for people, and, and so many great services and classes, and it's a really wonderful, wonderful thing that's happened to our town. Thank you.
Everything has slowly rebound since the pandemic, almost up to three, and down a scale, and concretely, I mean, it's, uh, higher, uh, than in certain areas, especially like people during the pandemic, doubling our visit numbers, have really been easing up quickly.
This is the slide, right?
Yes, that's the one, that's the one. Can you just walk us through that a little bit?
Um, yes, so, in terms of library visitors, well, actually, for all the graphs, the gray is the last normal year that we had before COVID. And the, the very sad-looking orange is, is COVID. And then us rebounding is the teal and the darker blue. So, library visitors, you can see that we're almost at pre-pandemic levels. Our items circulated were just about at pre-pandemic levels. Um, and those are all our materials, books, hotspots, Chromebooks, all of it. Program attendance, you can see that we're almost at pre-pandemic levels, and I think, um, the biggest thing to keep in mind with program attendance is that also includes our outreaches. So as, you, you know, towns and community events start to open up and redo all of their community festivals, and people are starting to feel more comfortable to come out again, that's when you start to see us creeping up higher and higher. As, also visiting schools, a lot of the schools wouldn't allow us to visit during COVID because of safety protocols. And so now that those are mostly lifted, you're seeing us rebounding, um, really highly. And then digital downloads, um, that just skyrocketed after COVID. People, um, began to use our e-resources higher and higher, and they have not slowed down. So that's been wonderful to see.
So as far as programs, uh, program attendance, uh, what are the main programs that are being attracted or attracting people to the library?
Storytime, yeah.
Storytime.
Storytimes, um, big hit. You know, a lot of newer families, we're not comfortable coming out with their infants and their toddlers during COVID, so we're starting to see that creep up again. Uh, our Power Up Afternoons, which is Monday through Friday during after-school hours, that has, uh, that's fairly new, that I, we're in our second year. And so that has really contributed to our program attendance coming up. And, uh, again, that is just demonstrating how a lot of families are more comfortable after school picking up their child and coming to the library, coming to the park, going to the farmer's market. So I would say Power Up Afternoons, and, uh, we're starting to do more special one-off events. So, uh, most recently, we just started a knitting program for our adults, and that just started today. We had a nice crowd knitting in the library in the afternoon. We're starting to do more adult, uh, craft programs, and that's mostly to combat, uh, loneliness and a lot of our, our senior population who may not have an opportunity to, you know, do, you know, a lot outside of, you know, their home and get to know more people. And we're starting to see a lot of new residents, and so a lot of seniors just wanting to connect with others and, uh, take a, an art class, a knitting class. And then, I think, the rest of it is just, we're getting out to the farmer's market a lot more. Uh, we brought the Maker Mobile to do that cookie decorating, but that's not, you know, the only one we have planned in the summer. We're going to be visiting more often and do more programs on those Thursdays, whenever there's a farmer's market. So I would say storytime is probably the biggest one.
Oh, it's interesting, you should men, mention the knitting, because there is a knitting group that happens in the Buckeye, uh, room as well. So you might want to consider merging those two somehow.
Well, we have, uh, it's an instructor who comes, so I think we'll, it's kind of our experiment. We'll reach out to that knitting group and, and grow that.
Carmen, I, I realize I probably should have, this is your first time probably meeting the council members, so Carmen's our new town, um, uh, library manager. So if you, if you wouldn't mind sharing just a tiny bit about your background, and I think you have a, a, a fun fact connection to the town.
I do. So I have been with San Mateo County Libraries for eight years now. I started as a youth services librarian in San Carlos. I became a senior librarian, um, uh, just, ooh, I don't know, five years ago, uh, at Huffman Bay Library. And then I became a branch manager, and I served as the branch manager for the North Fair Oaks Library for the last three years. And so, um, being at Portola Valley Woodside is my newest appointment. My fun fact is actually I have very deep and personal connections to Portola Valley. My in-laws are longtime Portola Valley residents, and I'm here every weekend. My, my husband went to Ormondale, Corder Madera, went to the preschool across the street. I can't go to, you know, Binkin's or Roberts without knowing someone that knows my father-in-law, and also my mother-in-law. So it's my close personal connection, one of the reasons why I wanted to come to Portola Valley, because I love the community and it's like family, and, I don't know, Adrian, do you want to say a little something? Adrian just joined us about a month ago.
Hi there. Um, yeah, I, I actually was working with Carmen as a senior librarian at the North Fair Oaks Library for the last almost two years. And then, uh, this will be my, my new, um, my new appointment also. I haven't made a full transition to Portola Valley and Woodside yet, um, because, um, I'm still doing, juggling both roles at the moment, but I'm looking forward to, um, when I can come over here full-time. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, welcome to both of you, and thanks again for your time tonight.
With that, we can move on to the, um, Town Manager Report. Sharif?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Good evening. I have a little bit of a lengthy update for tonight, I wanted to cover a couple bases. We are happy to announce that our Director of Building and Planning interviews are underway this week, and so we're looking forward to getting that started, and hopefully we'll be able to provide some good news shortly. John Biggs is on limited time with us, as he is a retired annuitant, and so he's winding down his hours. And, um, as I mentioned, I'm starting my pre-morning period. I'm in denial first, and then we'll go to the different stages, but John has been a great asset, as you all know, and, uh, we wish him the best, but he will be sunsetting out in the next couple of weeks, so you won't, um, we don't have a Director of Building and Planning on a daily basis here, so we'll manage that accordingly. We also did post for Director of Finance, um, as mentioned, um, to you all, I think we're in a much better place now than we were just months ago, having Christian Company here, so I'm comfortable removing that interim title, if you will. I'm looking for a permanent, uh, Director of Finance moving forward, so that just got posted this week. And then we also have a third position that you may see, um, posted, which is our Development and Engineering Technician. This is a hybrid position, that's 50% building and planning and 50% engineering, to help with encroachment permits, other things that are in the engineering program. So that'll be 50% for Public Works, 50% for building and planning, that's also posted as well. So that's an update kind of on our, um, staffing levels. Today, I did host, uh, another Coffee with Town Manager, a safety update. As you all know, um, my town manager meetings are meant to be informal and allow for dialogue, as opposed to just having it in a structured session like a council meeting where you have your three minutes, and it's, it's difficult to have a real, a true dialogue. And so that was by design, having that town manager meeting. Obviously, anything that reaches the level of it needing to come to council, I'll bring that to council as well, so no decisions are made, just being able to allow for dialogue. I thought we had a very good turnout today. My intention is to pick up a focus or a topic for a town manager coffee, probably like once a quarter, every couple, two, three months. Like, for instance, next time I might have a town manager meeting on the budget, as we get closer to budget season, and, and those have been, um, well-received, and I think today was a great turnout with that. And so we had Captain Fox of San Mateo County Sheriff come and, uh, discuss with us and many of the residents there about what we can do as a town, what are we looking at, what, what, what can we proactively do as, as a, as a town? And as you all know, th, this crime wave, this crime theme that's happening in all over the state of California, where there's folks in stolen cars, going in different places and grabbing things and going, that's kind of here to stay for a while, and so we need to address that as a town, and, and, um, Portola Valley's not immune to that. What the captain actually shared is that Woodside, Los Altos Hills, was actually hit a little bit harder than actually we were with these, you know, three or four burglaries that have happened in the last couple of months. And so, some of the simple things, he brought some statistics to the town, um, meeting, I'm going to post that on our website tomorrow morning for, for all folks to see, um, based on the San Mateo County Sheriff's, uh, numbers. But also, um, during Christmas time, it, it's very common, especially in Portola Valley and some of our more, um, remote areas, that there are a lot of folks that are gone, a lot of folks that are traveling. And so burglaries happen more during that, that time between Christmas and New Year's. And the sheriff's office actually did a saturation, um, uh, event, if you will, where they kind of saturated the town with more patrols and things, and they actually ran out five different parties on five different days for folks that are just canvassing the town or circling around, and people that necessarily shouldn't be here, and it turns out, uh, that they weren't. They were, had nefarious, you know, um, intentions. So he, he explained that. We also talked about, uh, simple things that folks that we don't do that are taken for granted, like locking your doors, actually turning on your alarm if you have an alarm, making sure your cameras work, all those different pieces, but also that burglars are getting much more sophisticated than that, and cameras and, um, alarms are not enough, and there's other things that we need to do. And so, uh, one of the things that, that we've talked about is looking at cameras and their feasibility, are they working, are we accessing them? The sheriff's department likes cameras, they're able to access and look at different pieces, but it's also the fact that the folks that are coming in with cars, these are stolen cars with stolen plates. It's not as simple as running a license plate and finding the folks that are, that are, that are here. Another thing that I'm looking at is also, what if we, as a town, we're small enough, what if we look at and explore private security or private patrol, something that we can enhance, uh, put as an enhancement to our sheriff's contract? That's something we can certainly take a look at. And another thing, as we move forward with the contract with the sheriff's office in the future, is maybe we have a community services officer that's dedicated to, um, the town of Portola Valley. CSO or Community Service Officer is a non-sworn-in, you know, um, non-gun-carrying, um, employee of the sheriff's department, but they're, they're, they're available to provide reports, they're available to close off the street, they're able to, you know, um, do different things, and that's certainly something we can take a look at as well. Another thing that we discuss as a town is, there's this notion of there's one deputy or one sheriff here at a time. Well, it could be one, it could also be five, depending on what we're doing, and that, that, and that was discussed. And if we were to go out and hire or increase our contract from one sheriff to two, you're not going to reduce your crime by 50%. It's not as simple as that, and it's obviously a very expensive option as well. So as town manager, my commitment would be to look at different options, but what's out there, what works, and, uh, bring that back to council, and we can have a, a discussion on that to see what we'd like to do in the future. All of this is predicated on getting our finances in order and having our house in order, as you've heard me talk many times. Once we get our, our finances in order, once we get our house in order, then we can talk about what we may want to purchase or bring forward or ask residents for. If you want to do a partial tax with a safety element or an enhancement to that, that's certainly something we can explore in the future, but we can't do that until we, we, we nail down our finances and get caught up on our audits. And you've heard me, kind of a broken record on purpose, saying, we gotta get those done, and that's happening. Along that note, um, I'm excited that I'll, in April, I believe it's April 10th council meeting, I'll be bringing a finance and budget update. And before the April 10th meeting, I'll be meeting with the finance, uh, committee, along with George Savage and the committee, to come up with some strategies and some, recommendations for not only me but for council moving forward, of where we're at with our finances, are we going to move forward, how are we going to address our structural deficit? Because we do have a structural deficit with our sheriff's contract, we have a structural deficit when it comes to property tax and monies that are coming through for like vehicle license fees and things like that, and I'll bring that to council for, um, a much-needed discussion on how we continue to stay viable as a town. What's our one-year plan, five-year plan, 10-year plan to stay viable, um, moving, moving forward? That also ties into, you've heard me talk about the restructure. We're still in our restructure phase at Town Hall, which is getting our right folks in the right positions, um, moving forward. The last piece I wanted to do was, um, today was the day, was my due date for bringing back an update on, uh, non-Town, non-Brown Act committees, so town manager committees. So far, it's been working well. I've heard a lot of good feedback from the now-town manager committees, that they like the setup, they like the flexibility, they're able to have, um, less stringent, obviously, guidelines and things for posting. We set out the, the, the guidelines of posting 24 hours before, making sure there's an agenda, having minutes, and that's all been adhered to, if you will. Now we're getting into the, the details of actually nailing that down, and so our next step is working with Patty Doo's, we're going to set up a work group, so not calling it a committee, not a committee of committees, right? This will be a, a... This will be a true work group where Patty and I tonight are asking folks from the community and from the different committees to be on this work group, so then we can now update the committee handbook. So the committee handbook that we will bring back to council will consist of a town manager section, town manager committee section, and a Brown Act committee section, and make it clear for us what the guidelines are for town manager committees, what the guidelines are for council committees, and then making sure that it's updated, because there are a lot of things in there that have been kind of left out or omitted, and we got to make sure that we can get that back. So that'll be coming soon back to council. But overall, it's been received very well, the flexibility, if you will, with the town manager piece. And for me, as town manager, it has not been a burden on myself or staff, so that's been well-received as well. Those are my updates for tonight.
That's great. Lots going on.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have it slated for April 10th. There's a finance committee meeting that will be end of March.
Any questions? No question?
Since I wasn't able to attend the coffee, are there going to be future updates on, from the town or probably from the sheriffs, on best practices that the community is interested in learning about the wider community? You mentioned a few things that might be practical, but I'm sure folks in town might appreciate of a fresher on things to keep in mind.
Yeah, for sure. And what we've asked for from the sheriff is to include, and we'll include in our newsletter, a little safety section, if you will, where we can keep folks engaged and keep it as an ongoing discussion as opposed to just a one-time event. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. I will move it over to public comment, oral communications. So this is oral communications for the meeting, and I see no hands raised here in the schoolhouse. Oh, there is one. Jean-Paul, correct?
Jean-Paul, before you start, if you don't mind pushing the button.
Good evening, council and sheriff. Welcome aboard. Very happy to have a new town manager. I've been talking to you several times. I think we're very lucky, new perspective, fresh. And I want to bring two items that, I live at 420 Golden Oak. I've become the new block captain from the bottom of Alpine Road to about the 450 block. So I have three points. Alpine Inn is a total success. We're very happy to have Alpine Inn. They're very large contributors of income to the town. They're amazing people. We're restaurant owners, they're restaurant owners. We work together, and I was able to resolve for them that the town was not able to resolve that they rent the parking lot by the baseball field. So we have 60 cars parked there every day of their employees. This has lowered the amount of problems that we've had at the bottom of Golden Oak, because there's a beautiful fence, a heirloom fence there. Sarah, you go by that fence every day, and that is a heirloom fence. But that area is town-proper. They call it right-of-way. Well, before that, we had the parking lot arranged for them, cars would park there. You wouldn't park there, you have to do a U-turn. Dangerous. You have to cross the street at night, because there's no lights. We've had two or three accidents. The sheriff come, can't do anything about it because there's no parking sign. There's no parking sign because we spent two and a half years with the Parking Committee, the Transportation Committee, we get nowhere. We need to put a small no-parking sign. And we need absolutely to have the police be able to write a ticket, and they cannot write a ticket because there's no parking sign. And if they park at the bottom of the hill, a fourth of the car is on the asphalt. It's all documented, all the pictures there, everybody's got them. So we would like the town council to take, figure out the way, sheriff, figure out the way that we can put a no-parking sign so that the police can have support and we can have some type of tranquility. We've been able to put a nice blackboard sign, which has helped a lot. Please don't park there. This has helped. And then Lori Hunter and the gang, for three months, had an employee there everywhere, sitting there on a stool to make sure people wouldn't park. This is not acceptable. It's just not the way to do things. So we need the city council, the mayor, you live three blocks from there, you can see it every day, you go up and down that street to get home. You need to help us. Second, on Menorca and Golden Oak, we have $300,000 of freshwater that has been lost in one year with a leak that nobody has an answer. Howard Young, Cal Water, engineers, you live three blocks in there. If you go down Golden Oak and the cars come up Menorca, the street is wet, you can slide and brakes, there's all brake signs of cars. There's a water leak, we need to resolve this. We need to get this resolved as soon as possible.
Sorry to interrupt you, but we need to adhere to the rules.
Okay, just so you know, $300,000 as of today of wasted water, clean water, that the town has not been able to resolve.
Thank you very much.
One quick thing, please.
I just.
The emergency exit at the end of Alpine Inn has not been asphalted. The town attorney is here. If the fire engine goes in, the fire marshal knows, the fire engine cannot get out, the cars cannot get out.
Thank you. Sorry, just in fairness to everybody who, yeah, thank you. No other hands raised here in the schoolhouse on Zoom. First up is Rita Comas.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment, and thank you, Portola Valley Library, for all that you do. It's one of the best libraries around. I've been asking for the past four weeks for the opt-in parcel information, and finally received the map and the list from the interim planning commissioner, Mr. Biggs, this morning. Thank you very much. I called on Friday afternoon to get an update on these promised documents and left a few messages. To my surprise, I received a very nice callback from Thomas that works for Portola Valley. And yeah, he didn't have the answer, but he responded to my call in the afternoon and listened, and I really appreciate it. He was very, very nice, and I really appreciated his time and the callback that he gave me. On security, you know, I showed up at the coffee this afternoon, and there's a couple of things that we need to make sure that we do, that somehow if the town council can help us, if it's Howard Young's business to help us. But the mailbox security, you know, most people can't mail things from their home because of mail theft from their mailboxes, and so they depend on the blue mailboxes. But now we can't depend on that, and we haven't received the new secure post office mailboxes. And so someone in the town can follow up with that. And also with the AT&amp;T landlines, you know, with the thefts, with evacuation problems, you know, we won't have access to emergency help if we don't have our landlines. And there's issues with the cell towers or whatnot, we won't have the landlines. And anything that, you know, the council can do to help those landlines, it looks like Ray Mueller has stepped up, and, you know, our state congresspeople have stepped up with this, but please, you know, Portola Valley needs to speak up too. And for the license plate readers, in order for them to work, the cars in our community need to have front license plates. If people don't like the, you know, screws in front of their nice car, perhaps they can get the ones that look like a tattoo or a film, and California DMV will accept those, and they will pick up on the license plate readers. And I really hope that we do work with the, our partners from other communities and increase our license plate readers and actually, you know, utilize them to help not just do crime, but problems in our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Next up is Leslie Kreese.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Super. Just want to say thank you for all the updates, and our librarians are the best. This is a known fact. Going back to the discussion of safety, one request that I would have, it's great that everybody's talking about ways to be safer in town and measures we have to take, but could there be better reporting on crime events in town? You know, I'm originally from a small town, one of my children lives in a small town, and I still get online reports from those towns about, you know, break-in last night in the 100 block of, and I know they use Nixle. Is there a way that we could have better access to crime information in town? Palo Alto does this too to their residents, lets them know where there's been a criminal event happening, a break-in or whatever. It could be as simple as putting it on our website so that people would have to go find it, but at least it would be there to the town, being able to mail something out or put it in the weekly summary. But it would be nice to know where crime is happening in town and what kind of crime. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Leslie. Next hand up is Kristy Corley.
Yeah, thanks, everyone, for everything you do, and thanks for the sheriff meeting today. It's much needed for those of us on Golden Oak. It's not been an easy week for us. I sent two letters to town council this week, and I don't see them in the public comment section, so I don't know. I think they went to all five council members, and I would expect them to be in that public comment section. In the future, hopefully, or tell me what I did wrong, please. So I have done a survey on the Flock readers. We have three older vigilant readers, and other cities have 14 to 49. So I would like to see our Flock readers be purchased and utilized. I think 70% of crime includes a vehicle, and Flock readers are solar. They can read paper license plates, no plates, stolen plates. They can read the make of a car, roof rack, bumper sticker, dent in a car. It increases the share of safety. Flock offers four options for purchase, in fact, taking an old system, combining it with the new system. Flock, unlike our Vigilant, has movable features where we can put it on a stop sign for our hotspots. Flock can alert people, the sheriff, right away if there's no license plates coming into our town. So I would like to see the council do a 20- to 30-minute Flock presentation for all of the residents and our council, and highly consider us changing the system out. And the sheriff today said they're only using Flock, and it's really helping them with crime. So I beg of you to look at this seriously and have a presentation that we can all see. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy. I don't see any other hands raised on Zoom or in the schoolhouse. So I will close oral communications, and we can move on to the consent agenda. You're really, I really have to follow the protocol. I'm so sorry. Let's follow up tomorrow, if you'd like. Reach out to me. Back to the consent agenda. Is there any item that any council member would like to pull on the consent agenda? I'm seeing lots of nodding heads, so I will take a motion to... Oh, oh, thank you for the reminder. Is there a public comment on the consent agenda? I don't see any hands raised in the schoolhouse or on Zoom. Thank you very much, Catherine, for that reminder. Given that, I will accept a motion to approve.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Ball call vote?
Mayor Wernicke?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Councilmember Alts?
Aye.
Councilmember Happy? Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Great. Moving along, we will move on to item number six, the regular agenda. And the first item is the electronics communications policy, and I believe we have a presentation or comments from Catherine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council and community. And I do have comments on a formal presentation, but I did want to provide some background in terms of reminding folks of the prior discussions around the electronic communications policy and some of the changes that have been made. And then if there are any clarifying questions, we can bring up the policy on the screen and go over it. So this topic, I guess, dates back to around the time that I was, joined the town in late May of last year, and there had been some concerns in the community regarding posts that were made in PB Forum, and the town had also received a cease and desist letter from a resident who was concerned about those posts. And so it seemed like a good time to look at the town's electronic communications policy. The council held a study session in July, July 12th, and looked at some sample policies regarding electronic communications, social media, public records, that kind of thing, and provided direction, noting that one of the policies that you reviewed was from the city of Saratoga, which had some strong policies, and I was provided with some direction to craft a policy for council review. So I worked on that, and in the meantime, did a little bit more research and learned that the town actually does have two existing policies regarding electronic communications that are on the books, a little bit old and in need of update, but these policies, and by the way, they are not attached to this staff report, but they are attached to the October 12 staff report regarding this item. So as a reminder, in 2009, the council adopted a policy regarding the distribution of writings submitted to members of the town council. And this policy goes into the details of distributing communications to council members. It also talks about how councilors should generally only communicate with one other council member and never use email to, or other types of writings to form a consensus on an item, and has other policies regarding warnings on the website, noting the public nature of writings that are submitted, reminding folks that those are public records. It has additional policies around public records that are a little bit outdated, like, for example, it says, "When a Public Records Act request is received, the town council and the town attorney should be immediately notified." And I assure you, you don't necessarily need to be immediately notified. I worked with the clerk on Public Records Act requests, but a lot of times it's a routine. So anyway, so the policy's in there that could use a refresh. And then I also learned through this research that the town has a policy from 2010 regarding the use of personal computing devices, and this one's also a bit outdated. It talks about personal computing devices that are provided by the town to members of the town council, and that's generally outdated because folks use their own personal computing devices. It also prohibits the use of these devices and during town council meetings to send emails or texts, with the exception of for emergency reasons. So this actually goes, you know, beyond the texting policy from last year, but it's a general prohibition on, relevant to council members only, to make those communications during town council meetings. And we talked about this before, but it appears the reasoning for that is in one of the recitals. It talks about the importance of paying attention during town council meetings. So in any event, those are two policies that are on the books, and then this item was brought back to council on October 12th, where the council reviewed the draft policy and took additional comment from the public. There were some suggested edits to the policy made at that meeting, and I worked on that, and then intended to bring it back two weeks later, your next meeting, and you'll all remember what happened then. We had a Zoom failure at that meeting, and we're not able to take remote public comment. And so the council decided to not hear the item that evening since folks had been, you know, relying on their ability to do remote comments. So it was tabled and is brought back here tonight. And one, a... Um, and one additional thing happened in the interim between that October um meeting with the, or the, with the Zoom bill and tonight, which is that um, as we just discussed, the time I was discussing, um, there's also been a restructuring of some of uh the town committees. So there are some committees that are subject to the Brown Act. Um, and uh, the other committees, which are under the um purview of the town manager, are not subject to the Brown Act. And so with this um policy, I did do some further editing and restructuring of it to make it clear that um the Brown Act's policies are only um uh only apply to um legislative bodies um that are subject to the Brown Act. So they do not apply to the committees that are not subject to the Brown Act. And then the other, um, you know, generally speaking, the, the um, I also did a little bit of reorganization to just put the Brown Act policies together and the Public Records Act policies together. Would that would be helpful quickly for um, you know, those folks on committees that um are not subject to the, to the Brown Act. Otherwise, general cleanup items um are in, are um here. And I happen to answer any questions about um the policy itself, any of the changes. Um, and we could pull it up if you want to look at any of the specific language. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Um, any questions? Judith, go ahead.
I have a couple.
Yeah.
So I just want to be very clear, we're, we're superseding the two thousand nine and two thousand and ten and the texting policy. So this is going to be a one, one place for it all. You reference in here certain capitalized advisory committees on the first page of the resolution. And you distinguish from town manager lowercase committees. I, because we're starting to implement town manager versus other committees, what's the difference between a certain advisory committees relative to town manager? Are they different sets? Are, like, is anything that's not town manager an advisory committee? Like, uh, because the terminology ripples through and I'm just trying to make sure I follow the intent.
Uh, the intent is for um the Brown Act provision to only apply to legislative bodies. And so legislative bodies would be those committees that are subject to the Brown Act.
So any, so why does it say certain advisory committees? Is, is advisory including town manager?
Yeah, so uh, the town manager committees do advise the town manager. So um, I would say the, there are um fifteen or so advisory committees in town and some advise the council and some advise the town manager. Um, so that's the intent.
Okay, okay. Uh, I'll have some comment on that later. And is it pretty, it's not understood to me, but is it common terminology to reference uh staff or council liaison or alias? This is in the e- communications. As, if people know what that is other than me, that's fine. I just don't know.
Yeah, well, this was um, this was a suggestion, um, I believe, uh, that was discussed at, at the last time we uh discussed this item in October.
Where is this one? Can you just reference?
Yeah.
Uh, under section four C. So it's on page fifteen or nineteen, nineteen of thirty-three.
Yeah, so this is regarding um e-communications by commissioners and committee members. Noting that our current practice is that uh we do not issue town email addresses to them. And so what um I've, what we saw in the Saratoga policy, for example, is that there, they also don't have, uh, necessarily have city email addresses for all of their uh commissioners and committee members. But they do have a staff liaison for every single um uh committee. And their policy uh requires um uh the staff liaison to be copied. That way it gets into the, the city's, you know, records retention, um, and, you know, public records. And we don't have to go asking committee members um for their emails. If we get a Public Records Act request for them because they've already copied the staff liaison, so they're in that system. Uh, so here we don't have that. Um, so that's, that was why um there was a suggestion, which I thought was a good one, uh, that uh folks could count, could copy the um, the alias uh address.
Then there will be something.
Set up, yeah.
Set up, okay. Uh, my last question is the next paragraph, the Brown Act and open government. It says, don't communicate with more than one other council or commission committee member. But for subcommittees, subcommittees of the council would be two, but for other committees that are not town manager committees, wouldn't a quorum be potentially more than that? And is that okay or is it not okay under your framework?
Yeah, so um, this does say normally. Um, so normally, um, I think in my, in my mind and in the, basically the current policy that this is based on, uh, which only applies to council, it assumes that a subcommittee is two. But I see your point and I think we got a public comment on this, that um for the town committees, there may be subcommittees of, of more than two. So, you know, this is something where um, i- if the council wanted to be super specific, we could, you know, um, probably redraft it. But I did, I would note that this, you know, the, the, the term normally is, you know, normally, uh, that that would be how it, how it goes. But certainly if there were some committees that had uh more than two, then the, the intent is to not violate the Brown Act.
Less than a quorum is basically.
Less than a quorum, yes.
Any other questions? Go for it.
Um, so one of the questions that got brought up in the past was PB Forum. As a, you know, is it social media, is it not social media? I mean, how does this policy apply to PB Forum?
Uh, this policy treats PB Forum as social media and as a potential place to violate the Brown Act if, if there are um, you know, posts by council members and then comments by another member of council. So it would be the same as uh Nick, well, I'll just use the example of, say, Facebook um would be uh raise a similar concerns if someone, a council member posts something and then one of their fellow council members uh responds in a comment or um a like, uh, then that would be prohibited under this policy. So it treats them the same essentially.
You said one other?
One other, yeah.
But doesn't, isn't that just sort of the equivalent of a non-quorum? I, that, that's the, one of the things I, I have to say, I don't quite understand. I understand that you're on a very slippery slope because you just have to get one more like and then you have violated it. So why is one person commenting on, you know, one person saying putting a comment in and, and then getting one comment on that? It sounds like sort of a subcommittee of two.
So I guess it's part of it's a slippery slope and then the part is, well, there could be a third council member who just sees those two and they know how they're going to vote and so now they've got that information. And this is also based on, you know, uh, uh, state law that is, you know, basically this tracks um state law, which I don't have the bill number in front of me, but um, it similarly uh, you know, prohibits us too from.
Yeah, no, I mean, it makes sense. I was, I was just trying to have you clarify it to the public, so everybody heard you. Uh, one of the arguments before was the PB Forum isn't like social media, that it's private and that you have to be accepted. But that you, you believe that this policy is general enough that this term of social media will cover PB Forum?
Yes, um, I, I, we did discuss this at a prior meeting and I believe I got direction along those lines. And I think it's, I think it's good to have a, I mean, otherwise, uh, there's either nothing that applies to PB Forum and um, I don't know if the, if, if there was a desire to prohibit you from posting on PB Forum altogether. Um, I don't think that's required of the Brown Act and that's certainly not required by this policy.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
The commissions also have to, have to comply and the committees. So if one of them comment, then another comments, then that becomes a violation.
Yes, for Brown Act committees.
Then that, that would be something you shouldn't, that a commissioner or a county, even a committee member shouldn't be doing, right? Giving a strong opinion and letting people know exactly how you feel about it.
Um, so I think you're, we're talking about maybe uh something slightly, slightly different, which is sort of stating your opinion about how you plan to vote. And this doesn't really cover that topic. I mean, there are other, um, there are other legal reasons for not doing that. Um, to, you know, preview how you're going to vote for something. But this, um, the social media um uh policy here is more about uh preventing inadvertent violates of the, violations of the Brown Act.
But, but just to be clear, I mean, we're not saying that a commissioner or a council member cannot get on to social media and state their opinion. Voting's a little different, but they can certainly state their opinion. That's not prohibitive. What's prohibitive is if somebody does it and then another council member likes it or comments on that. That's the prohibi- the prohibited part.
Correct, and I, I think maybe I was um answering a question that wasn't necessarily asked, but I, I thought I, I heard a, a question about um, you know, should I say how I'm going to vote on an item that's before me this evening? Okay, we're, the housing ill is coming up and I want to.
That wasn't actually what I was asking.
Yeah, and, and I, there are other reasons not to do that, but they're not covered by this policy.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions? Um, all right, move on to public comment on this agenda item. I don't see any hands raised in the schoolhouse. Um, so far one on Zoom, Rita Comas.
Thank you for taking my comment on this issue. Um, you know, yes, the town had a policy in two thousand nine and two thousand ten. I, I'd love to know how those policies were covered with the people that are on the different committees or on the town council or the commissions, if at all. And how will this updated policy, once it's signed off on, be conveyed uh to the town government, people in town government? I, I saw that at the last section, it's just that the person is, is, is supposed to do it on their own. But um, you know, that's not always uh, that doesn't always uh set in if they have questions and whatnot. If that's part of their orientation, will it be part of the orientation? Will it be reviewed every year? Uh, you know, like teenagers, people take uh internet and electronic, um, you know, they just do what they want. You know, photos are, belong to the world and um, and their comments are their own comments, which um actually they're, they're just not. And they put other people at risk and people don't always think about that. Teenagers don't think about that. And uh, it's clear if you watch the news, people in government don't always think about that either. Uh, there were several letters that had been sent by residents concerning this issue. And this issue was put off from a couple of meetings. And I did not see those letters in this packet for tonight as a review for the residents. Uh, if, you know, it's not in this packet, but I really hope that in the future, that uh if an item is, is moved forward in the, in a meeting off of an agenda, that the letters from the residents are then moved on forward with that. Uh, I don't know how this new policy complies with AB nine nine two. Uh, a lot of other municipalities have done AB nine nine two and then beefed it up specific to their needs. So I, I, I didn't hear our um town attorney talking about AB nine nine two, but I would like um, you know, for her to say something more about that. And my last comment is the PV Forum. And not only is it owned slash moderated by somebody that is on two committees in our town uh commissions, but not everyone is allowed on it. Not everyone is allowed to say what they want to say on it. It is moderated by this particular individual. Uh, and I do not see it as the same as open for uh other social media uh that is out there. And there, because there is a barrier and the barrier is somebody that is in the town government. And I think that should be reconsidered and reviewed. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Um, next up is Ronnie Kerschinsky. Ronnie?
Hi, thank you. There, about the e-communications during the meeting, it, it says that if a council member or commissioner or committee member wants to reply to a text message on a personal matter, um, that they should excuse themselves from the meeting in a manner that does not disrupt the meeting. And I just wonder what that, how, how could a, how could a council member just excuse themselves from the meeting in a manner that doesn't disrupt it? It seems like, it seems like it would disrupt it. It, it seems like if they're, if they're able to um reply quickly to a text message from, on a personal matter inside the meeting, that that would, that would be the way not to disrupt the meeting. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Um, I don't see any hands, additional hands raised in the schoolhouse or on Zoom. So I will close public comment on this issue and bring it back to council for discussion. Who wants to start?
Sure. So I would clarify the point about the quorum versus one other member. Um, what I, when I, the reason for that is we want volunteers to feel comfortable that they're not going to be inadvertently out of compliance. And my own experience working on a subcommittee is a couple of quick emails to allocate workload, et cetera, are really valuable. So I would um, I would say more than an, a, to a more than a quorum or equal to the, a number equal to the quorum for such council, commission or committee. Something like that, that's inartful. And I think you've made it clear where the town manager committees are not going to be bound. But there are some like e-communications with the public um in accordance with the Brown Act. It just says committee members. So I think it's going to be really important, again, to get people comfortable in town manager committee meetings that it be a little more directive about other than Brown Act, or sorry, other than town manager committees, that type of thing. I don't feel that strongly about it, but I think that this is going to be something in a manual that could be helpful to volunteers. I'm not as concerned about the council and the commissions. So I, I offer that up for comment. I, I don't know that um it's necessary, but because you're trying to work with tax to minimize edits, I think it might not be as uh allocated as, as might be helpful. Those are it.
Anyone else?
Go ahead. I, I had a question um for Catherine about uh whether there, in other towns, there's a, a role for the town itself to have such a forum for exchange of ideas. Uh, PV Forum has uh functioned awfully well for getting ideas out there and um, and being able to share concerns. But should the town itself be functioning in that role? And are there other places where that happens? I've, I, I, I would say that the reason I'm bringing it up is because I've been, it's been suggested to me that PV Connect could be beefed up enough so that you actually had topics and then had people commenting. And uh, and neighborhoods could use it for neighborhood alerts, et cetera, et cetera. And there'd be a, a sort of a robust town-run electronic platform.
Uh, so unfortunately I am not aware of that. I could certainly see how it would be helpful to have a public version of PV Forum or a public version of Nextdoor. And so then all of those documents would be public and um available to anyone that asks for them. And it'd be, wouldn't have to worry about records retention and that kind of thing. Uh, but no, I am not aware of, of jurisdiction to decide that.
I could add to that, part of the reason that we have not had a town run version is that if anyone were to moderate content on that, it would become a First Amendment issue. So the fact that a private resident is, is moderating it skirts the First Amendment issue and allows for some moderation of content.
Oh, I, I just had a quick question. What is AB nine nine two? Are you familiar with that?
Yes, that was the bill number that was escaping me from Craig's question. There was a, yes, the social media statute. Um, and I want to ask that question, but I actually did, it does occur to me that um some towns do have um like the town-run uh Facebook or, or town-run Instagram page and And we may have that, yeah. And with that, and and I I think that may be another step for us to look at, they they do remove posts that are inappropriate and inappropriate is narrowly defined to avoid First Amendment issues, but they do have jurisdiction to remove those if it's if the content is outside the protection of the First Amendment. In terms of of AB 992, yes, that is the state law that I referenced earlier. And we are tracking that state law because it also prohibits just that second that second like or, you know, one post and then the second council member liking it or commenting on two is enough under AB 992. And that's why two is enough under this policy. There is there, you know, there have been questions about, well, how is social media defined under AB 992? Does it does it, you know, capture sites like PV Forum and Nextdoor where there's a moderator? And I think the if the legislature could have done a better job at drafting that that statute a little bit more broadly. But the intent here is to have PV Forum covered by the policy because it is used a lot. And I didn't think it was reasonable or required by the Brown Act to prohibit elected officials or commissioners or committee members from using it at all. And so therefore, the goal of this is just to put some guideposts around that use.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm in favor of keeping PV Forum and Nextdoor, by the way. I mean, they're they're both very similar in the sense, one's a private company, one is a private company with, you know, a private individual sort of moderating. But I I think what you proposed here is reasonable and and I think it's reasonable not to limit legislative bodies from commenting on either of those forums. I did think and and I was thinking the same thing, the the idea of meeting disruption, I read this saying. Is there some way that we could say, you know, if you can do some expedited thing like, you know, I'll be there at 10:30? That's completely different than, wow, I got to go take this phone call because I got to talk this through. And and, you know, one, I mean, literally, I could imagine, you know, you just do it, you put it back in your pocket and 15 seconds later, it's done versus, you know, Madam Chair, you know, Madam Mayor, can we stop this meeting? And then can I walk outside? I mean, that's going to take five minutes for what was a 15-second thing. So is there is there some way we could get at that sort of discreet notion of something that's, I don't know, expedited or just, you know, a a quick response, but, you know, something that's important on a on a family matter, et cetera.
Yeah, I think there are a couple of options here. I think one is to really just to delete that portion of the sentence so that it would just read the foregoing limitation shall not apply to the receipt of telephone calls or text messages in the event of an urgent personal matter, period. And just leave it open because I think people use their discretion and their best judgment to not disrupt the meeting.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with that. That that seems like a great solution. And then I wanted just to do a plus one on Judith's comment on the quorum. I think it is important that we say, you know, up to a quorum or less than a quorum, whatever, you know, you can find the right language. But that we make it clear both in this and in the in the handbook when we, you know, sort of do the softer writing of it. Thank you.
Can I have a follow-up comment? Okay. So part of the issue here is making sure the public doesn't perceive un- non-recommended communications. So I personally don't agree with deleting that portion. I think taking a minute going out if it's really important is is something okay. But, you know, it does say urgent personal matter. So it by definition doesn't include, oh, I'm meeting in 15 minutes or I'm only 15 minutes more, unless it's like rising to the level. So I'm personally aware both of the practicality, which I appreciate, but the the optics are part of it. And I think we we need to be thoughtful about that part as well.
Any? Well, well, any comments on that topic? Maybe we'll just exhaust that right now from others. This is item, this is five.
Personally, I was fine with with the solution that Craig came to, which is deleting the second half of that sentence and and, you know, understanding that, no, of course, we will not disrupt the meeting. And and we will minimize, you know, the 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 meaning of the overall point is clear, which is we shouldn't spend a lot of time on on texting in the middle of meeting unless it is urgent.
I agree with Craig and Jeff.
Me too.
And I'm happy to, I mean, if it becomes a problem, we could revisit it.
True.
Think we've been pretty good about it.
Is there any other comment on other aspects? I know, Mary, have you had your chance to make comments on Jeff?
I'm I'm still because of because of the strong statements on the on the PV Forum that involve the moderator, that get responses from other committee members. I'm I'm wondering how we're going to roll this out for PV Forum. The I find it, I think it's important that that we preserve the PV Forum and the function that it it provides for the town. But it's going to, there's going to have to be a pretty good understanding for the commissioners that how they communicate information to the public and how other commissioners respond to to their to their comments. Or if their responses are not, whether they follow the same topic, does it matter if it follows the same topic? Is it you could, does it fix it if it's not, if it if it comes under another hashtag? Does it? What is the regulations there and how is that going to be communicated?
Well, go ahead.
Because this is a real function, a real asset to the town, there's no doubt about it. And we've just explained why it is and helps to get around the First Amendment Act. But it also gets us on a on a tight limb on on a number of issues.
I was just going to agree with you and the agree with the comments that it is really important to do training and orientation. And I would recommend that we incorporate this in our committee handbook update as well as orientations for new committee members and even sometimes a refresh for existing committee members. It can be really helpful. And I actually love doing Brown Act and Public Records Act trainings. So if you ever, yeah, the commissions ever want a refresh, I'm very happy to do it and I like to make them lively and full of hippos and that kind of thing.
Well, and I think when we to add to that, one, once this is approved, I think it should go out to everybody with Cliff Notes of highlighted points so that they're aware. Yeah. I will just add my comments then. I already mentioned my point of view on item 5B. I think that that's that makes sense. 5A, I absolutely agree as it relates to committees that the regulation is just around a quorum. And so coming up with slightly modified language there. One new item is something that I believe I brought up when we reviewed this the first time, and it's still my point of view. This is on 4C. Related to committees, again, in particular, again, I just think I'm trying not to be too cumbersome with our volunteer committee members. And it does seem onerous to ask them to always copy an alias. I think, you know, I'm just wondering if there's ways to say this is make your best efforts or it's a guideline. But this just seems cumbersome to me and I didn't know if anybody else agrees with that. And really, I think it's extremely rare that we would have a PRA for our committees. We had some unprecedented activities a couple, you know, years ago that I think was the catalyst to even including this. I don't think there's ever been an issue with this. And I just would like to make things as pleasant as possible for our volunteer committee members. So I would be open to limiting this to commissioners and not requiring this of committee members.
I'm I'm somewhat concerned about that because it's it is already limited, if I understand correctly, to non-town manager committee.
This is actually 4C is under public record.
And so it's intended for everyone. So what's the rationale to have them apply to the town manager committee?
So any record concerning town business is a public record under the Public Records Act. And it's been construed really broadly by the Supreme Court. So so those communications would likely be public record. And the goal is just to, yeah, like with all with all the communications to have them in the city's, you know, records database in the event of a of a PRA. You know, I do agree that these are pretty, it's pretty rare to get this kind of of request. And so, you know, if if the council wanted to, you know, delete that sentence and just leave it that, you know, basically have the commissioners and committee members on their own do their best to preserve their their e-communications in the event of a of a PRA request. I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to that. I mean, that that would, you know, comply with the Public Records Act and probably the intent here. So.
I guess my question, Sarah, is is it, what specific language are you most worried about here? Is it the requirement to copy on every email communication a town address?
Yes, or committee members. I also think it suggests a you know, my personal take is it suggests that there's some malintent here. And I think, you know, committee members are just communicating with I don't know, I just, I think it's an overstep and I think it's really, again, it hasn't been a problem. This was reaction to an incident. And I just don't want to overreact going forward.
It doesn't bother me at all. I I think people are going to do their best and I don't think we're going to go after committee members for failing to do this. But do you have a problem with the last sentence about keeping a record of all e-communications? Is it the record-keeping?
No, I think always standing, like prior to this, the role that as as it exists right now, you're supposed to maintain, retain all your communications and on your honor, submit anything on through your personal email when there's a PRA. I'm comfortable with that as the role for committee members versus adding an additional step for them.
I'd be happy happy to keep the alias as a best practice and just suggest it like the handbook would suggest it as as a practice for a committee if you're going a lot of technical communications about town business through a committee. With the but also with kind of, you know, be very clear, do not delete emails about your town as you go on a town committee. I think that, I mean.
Jeff, you, what would you do with the council and commissions versus the committee in that framework? How would that?
Well, the council, I mean, our our communications should be through our town addresses. So that's all, you know, and the same is that logic of the commission.
Not true for commission.
Commission, she's personal.
Right.
Well, I was talking about just committees, but.
Yeah, specifically for committees, I would still, I would, I would just, again, just, you know, best practice, use the alias. Failing that, do not delete your emails. Because I mean, one thing I would add is the advantage of the alias, it protects committee members and commission members. So they don't have to keep this stuff. I mean, it's that way they can delete their personal emails and not worry about it. They've cleaned up their inbox because that record is now in the town archive. So, I mean, I'm okay with the best practices. I mean, I I don't feel strongly that we have to have this like, you'll do this or we're going to find you or something crazy. But I think we should make it clear to people that this is actually in their interest. It makes it way easier. And, you know, and people occasionally by accident send something to my personal email address. I always respond and I just CC my town address so that I don't have to worry about that my personal email has gotten polluted. It's now, you know, back in the town's retention. So I you know, so anyway, I I sort of see this as a net positive.
It sounds like there's at least consensus maybe around softening the language a little bit, that it would be a best practice or?
Not for council or commission, for me.
Correct. Yeah, no, I wasn't requesting it.
You know, it said should, it also says should, so you can interpret that. And and you can bifurcate it into two. It's getting a little cumbersome. But yeah, I think the best practice standard for communities, I do think it's easier for people not to have to go whittling through personal email to get this. So but that can be conveyed in a handbook, right?
What's the statute of limitations? How long do you have to hold on to these emails?
It's generally two years.
How many?
Two years.
Oh.
Catherine, we have suggested a couple edits and I know you don't, we don't love to make edits to things on the fly. But I also know we really want to pass this tonight. Do you, would you like us to take a little break so you could work on wording or?
I I want to get a little bit more clarification just on the one that we just talked about. And then I I think I could actually just go through them and without a break. Well, actually, no, I think I might want a break to to deal with a quorum issue. But the one we just talked about is is there consensus that the sentence that we're talking about, the alias sentence, is okay because it should, or we further soften because it's because they should as a best practice include a copy?
Well, I I think it's important the commissioner do it, right? That that's, well, and people can disagree with that. But for me, all I would do is have two sentences that look exactly alike and just have one with best practice for the committee and one as its for the commission. But but obviously, others could blame.
Now, my comments were only about committees, so I agree with you.
And am I understanding that both manager committees and Brown Act committees have to do this?
Yes.
That's, I think none of us were taken by surprise by that. So it needs to be clear if possible, make it clear enough that it's that it's that it's both.
So is that the direction? I think that is. So obviously, I'll add a, I'll work on another sentence. It would basically say the same thing, except it would, instead of should include a copy, it would, it would say should as a best practice include a copy.
For the committee.
For the committees.
I know I know it seems like a net guise, but I just want to be sensitive to the perception of cumbersome, cumbersome.
Right. And then in the committee handbook, we're going to make it clear that if you don't follow this best practice, then you're subject to having your, you've got to go and search your emails and keep them for two years. I mean, that's the flip side of this is if we say best practice, but it's not a sort of requirement, then the the flip side of that is that they now have to keep those emails for two years and discourage them if asked. Which to me sounds worse, but I mean, I'm okay. I mean, I I I'm I'm okay if we want to just put in these two sentences. But the I think the committee handbook needs to be clear on what the implication of this is. So this isn't, by not doing this, doesn't no, no, I had, but but by by doing this, by sort of saying best practice and softening this, we're not really softening it. It's we're, the requirements on the committees are exactly the same, whether this says best practice or not. All all we're doing is saying that you don't have to use the alias. But now what we're saying instead is that you need to keep it for two years and discourage it if asked. So you know, if this, if the two sentences, the way we want to go, I I will go along with it, but it's not clear to me. It's a better and softer. Because I I know, I get your philosophical point. It makes sense, but it seems like we're not well, I can give it to you. I just, I'm just not sure that you're really getting what you want, but that's fine. I'm I'm willing to give it to you.
Are we clear on the other ones? Do you need any more direction on that?
I'll just go through them and and we can confirm. Okay, so on 5A, there was consensus direction to clarify that electronic communication should not normally be sent by a council or commission slash. or commission slash committee member to a number, and this is where I want to actually have a break to just, oh, Judith has an idea. Do you want to read it into the record?
To a number of council or commission slash committee members equal to or greater than a quorum of such body.
I think that works, actually. It's a bit of a mouthful. Great. And then the next one, and I think the last one, but I want to confirm that, is, let's see.
We're just going to end it at personal matter.
That's right. So in B, this was for, sorry, 5B, that, yeah, that last sentence will just end at personal matter, period. And I understood there was some discussion regarding whether further clarification was needed around committee, the definition of committee members. But I, I think I heard that it was okay.
I think it's okay. I wouldn't, I wouldn't torture it. In fact, I had made an assumption that one of these was intended only to be for advisory and you actually clarified that it, no, it's every committee. So I think we should leave it alone and not try and do that on the floor.
Great. So with that, I think, actually, I don't need a break. I think I have, I have the direction. And if I, I'd be happy to re-read this again, but if not, I think you can go ahead and approve the policy as amended. And I'm going to save Judith's handwritten notes. And so the final one that's signed by would include that language.
So I'm making a motion to adopt the updated electronics communication policy with the amendments discussed.
A little second.
I'll call out. I'm going to correct the order.
The correct way.
Councilmember Alves?
Aye.
Councilmember Hefty?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hasko?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
All right, moving on to, thank you guys, and thank you Catherine. Moving on to item 6B, the ethics, proposed code of ethics and values policy. Oh, and I think we have our subcommittee that will be presenting this item.
You're on it.
So you've got our subcommittee report. I think it basically states what we were after. This is actually something we started back in June or July, I mean, a long time ago. And it got pushed for a variety of different reasons. And, you know, as I put in the subcommittee report, I mean, there are many towns that have this. And we even saw recently with this woke kindergarten thing, that, you know, I think it is important to have, you know, a statement of values that you can point out and say, look, this is what we believe in. And our intent with this was not to say this is just for council or just for council and commission, but that, you know, this is sort of what this town stands for. And that, you know, we would like all the committees, we'd like staff, we'd like the public, we'd like everybody to sort of believe that this is the set of ethics and values that we sort of follow. So that was the goal of this. I hope that it's sort of pretty straightforward and that people don't look at this and go, really? We don't believe that. So I don't, Mary, do you have anything else you want to add?
I think it just helps people realize in a world that became quite fraught during COVID and people, tempers got short and what the goal is for communication, that it should be gracious and easy. Like you're defensive or being disrespected, that there is time to be respectful for everyone as best we can. And, and I, we thought this was, I thought, I mean, I probably, I looked at probably 25 of these codes of ethics and this seemed the more, the most friendly, shall we say, the less, the least punitive and the most open and easy to understand. So that's the reason that it was chosen. And, you know, it's all, it's all basically good stuff. Remember that communication is two ways, listening is important. You know, I think, I think all, it's just a nice reminder that we all fail in a lot of these things, but that we need to keep revisiting, revisiting, particularly in stressful situations, ways to cope with difficult situations and to feel good about the way you communicate. So with that, I think we've done the best we could. There is some that think that we had too many embraces and in one, in the top said, there are two embraces. Both of us, both, it missed me, but it's sort of classic for the whole acronym that it's sort of supposed to be embracing the communication. So I don't think it's too much, that there's two, the use of embrace twice.
Thank you. Thank you to the subcommittee for your work here. Are there any questions from the council?
So I have a couple on the intent behind a handful of the details, not so much the overarching principle. So just going through in order, one, what's a unilateral meeting in 1E?
You can speak to it?
Go for it.
So I think what we're after is if you're engaged in basically a meeting, you're just, you're, it's one-on-one or it's, you know, you and a small group, that you're not sitting there going, oh yeah, and this is how I'm going to vote, right? I mean, you know, like talking to a group of people, that's sort of what we were after.
The next one says showing respect for, and then I got the confidential information, but I show respect for people is a good concept, obviously, but then it's confidential than information, doesn't mean it's confidential. That's combining respect for people with like, I'll be confidential. Was that supposed to be all together? Is it like, if people don't want to be known, I'll respect their privacy? It was just a little odd it was combined to me.
So are you, you're saying respecting things that are designated confidential?
Yeah, I'm wondering if that's the main focus of that. Or like, are we respecting people generally, because that's obviously fine? But, but was there an implied obligation to keep people, people's information private? Like, that's an important thing to me. If, and it goes with confidential information. But if it's supposed to just be respecting people, then maybe break it into two.
Well, I guess I'm just, let me make sure I understand. So there are three pieces of it. So respecting people, we get, so confidence is, you know, somebody's going to say to you, you know, Judith, I'm telling you this in confidence. We think that, you know, ethically, you sort of don't share that stuff. And then confidential is more like, it's attorney-client privilege. And you hear something in closed session or whatever, it's not for you to discuss those things. So I think that's what we were after. So are you okay with those three or do you have concerns about the?
It's just odd to me, the group together, that's all. But I have no issue with the principle. Okay, then we go to 2E. What's the implication of particularly in relationships of unequal power in public or private?
So.
It's a bit granular for ethics to me.
Well, I think what we were trying to capture here was that what we've seen is people with sort of different levels of authority or power. And if you have somebody who's in an organization and they're multiple layers below you, and whether it's in a public forum and you're just dissing them or in private doing it, the fact that that unequal power dynamic exists is what we were trying to get people to be sort of respectful of, if you will, and I'm going to be careful, we've used respect before, but you know, you take my point. I mean, that's, that's what we were after. So, I mean, help me.
Well, why not just stop it after I'll refrain from disparaging others? I don't know that you need anything else. Well, maybe not tolerating disrespectful behavior. But, but I don't understand, like shouldn't everybody, not disparage everybody, period?
Right, and just not sort of tie it to the unequal, I mean, I guess for me, I feel like the unequal power makes it that much worse, which is, but, but I take your, but I take your point. It's still, it's still an ethical issue. So, yeah, I'd be happy to.
I think unequal power is, is an important concept that, that we should have, including our ethics. Because it's a bad habit that we get into that we can disrespect somebody who's not, not our, not at the same level of authority that we are or whatever other strengths we might perceive ourselves as having or not having. Organizational or electronic or whatever it happens to be, there's so many ways to disparage it.
Yeah, and we're coming from, Mary, it isn't, it isn't that I disagree. It's that broader principles to me can be powerful, like, period, you know, simple, understood.
Try and make it simple.
That's all, but I don't, I understand your.
I would get rid of the in public or in private, maybe. But.
Well, this is questions, so I'm not meaning to get ahead of, it might, I only have one or two others. 3C, make financial decisions that seek to preserve programs and services. So there may be financial decisions where we have to decide program A or program B, you know, the harsh reality that we are in right now. So what's the point of seeking to preserve? Is it, is it in light of the importance of programs and services? Because I can't personally say I'll always vote to preserve and still have fiscal responsibility.
Yeah, so I mean.
It doesn't say that you have to preserve it. It says that you're going to seek to preserve it.
But I might not, I might not agree that a program.
You certainly have acted that way.
I mean, and if you don't have a particular issue, I can bring that up in discussion. It's something to work on, but I just want, I honestly wanted to know if you had background in it.
Let's just hold it for discussion.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And then the last, okay, the collaboration piece in 8D. Why do I, as a town-elected official, have to consider the broader regional and statewide implications? Like, why is that a principle of how we're operating? Because my role is at the local level. But what's that getting at?
So, so I think at the time, we were just making, this was sort of like, and people were like, well, we should just sort of, like on the housing element, we should just sort of ignore the rent numbers. And, you know, it was, I mean, that was sort of what we were trying, and there were statewide implications to, like, if we make a decision to ignore that, I mean, then, you know, what's going to happen to town? And I guess you could argue that it's a local decision and then it's a local impact if the state sues the town. I mean, but, but that was, I think at the time, I mean, because again, this was written nine months ago. And so it was sort of in the heat of a lot of that stuff. So I think that's what we were after, maybe in discussion, we can decide whether it's still appropriate.
That, that, for the areas I just needed more information.
I, I think that, that it came from a sense that, that it was the responsibility of the committees to see the bigger picture. Not just, I mean, it may not be what you end up doing, but you have to at least keep in mind the larger picture.
Jeff, do you have any questions?
I do not.
All right, I will, someone has no more. Take public comment. No hands raised in the schoolhouse. First hand on Zoom is Rita Comas.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. This is a very nice document and I believe that above all other things that people should be and could be, they should be kind. What will be the process when this is not being implemented? When people aren't being kind to each other? You know, we should always treat each other with mutual respect, but in reality, it doesn't always happen. Will there be a mediation process for the residents or for staff or other people on committees? Who do we reach out to if we feel that, you know, somebody perhaps wasn't as kind as they should have been or could have been towards us? What about people on different committees? Who would they reach out to? And, you know, perhaps there should be a, you know, a conflict or a process for, and who to contact when that happens? Didn't seem to be one in the past and I really like this document. But these are things that people should be aware of and should be doing to each other and for each other every single day. But I really would like to know what will be the process when it's not working? And when people are not answering the phones in the town? Or when we're at a meeting and we're not receiving kind words back? And what would be the process and who should we contact and how could we contact them? Thank you. I look forward to the answers.
Thank you, Rita. Next hand is Vic Schachner. Vic, it looks like you're unmuted. I am wondering if you don't intend to be raising your hand. Vic, if you wanted to speak, you're unmuted. All right, I'm going to assume that that is some sort of error. Vic, if you did intend to speak and you want to re-raise your hand, we will, it looks like your hand just went down. All right. With that, there's no additional hands on Zoom or in the schoolhouse, so I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. Who would like to start? Want to start?
Sure. All right, so.
Back to the list.
The, the explanation was very helpful. There's a handful of suggestions I have. So on 1D, instead of distributing, can you say considering benefits and burdens according to consistent and equitable criteria? Distributing sounds very normative, like, I'm not quite sure how I distribute benefits and burdens.
What number is this one? Sorry, I missed one.
1D.
1D.
So considering benefits, burdens or evaluating benefits and burdens? That's all I can do. I can evaluate, I can recommend, I personally can't distribute.
Yeah, it's evaluate.
Evaluate. Anybody have, I don't know how you want to conduct the discussion.
Go for it.
Yeah, okay. Unilateral meetings, I think, is just a little confusing. So maybe if I engage in meetings outside of.
Private?
Yeah, private meetings, maybe. Yeah.
That was E, 1E.
Yeah. The unequal power, 1, 2E, I would delete in public or in private. Mary, you feel strongly about the, related people have unequal power, so I, if we can just shorten it, in public or in private doesn't add much. And I just like, it should be more powerful by being.
No, you would get, what you were. No, you would get, what you were suggesting is it be a problem particular. I treat staff and refrain from disparaging.
Yeah, that was, but I'm trying to, like, reflect your concern that that's an important phrase.
I think it's important because people will come in and say, I need to talk to the manager.
No, so can we just take out "in public" or "in private," but otherwise leave it? That would be my suggestion, Mary.
That was 2E.
Pardon?
I like it, I like it in public. I like the, I like it as written.
You think it adds something?
I do.
Okay.
It makes the point that talking about someone behind their back is also disrespectful.
Okay, all right.
It's so tempting.
Okay.
No changes on 2E now.
Yeah, no change on 2E. I'm comfortable with that.
Particularly in relationships, unequal power.
Yeah. Yeah, just leave it. 3E, the financial decisions.
There's no E for 3.
Oh, C. My eyes. So, I just have an issue with preserve. I would, again, say evaluate, consider programs or, or, you know, in light of the value of programs and services. I'm not quite sure what to do there, but I'm not going to, I don't think it's appropriate to require me to.
I read it a little differently in that the decision about the program itself, we might decide for content or policy reasons to not to preserve a program. But we're saying I make financial decisions that seek to preserve programs. And so I think what we're saying is we're making decisions so that we don't have to cancel something because of the money. So it's, I mean, you could write it a little more carefully, I suppose, but I actually think what, to me, what it's saying is that we're making financial decisions to try to preserve as much of our, you know, so we maintain our autonomy in terms of what programs we choose or don't, you know, implement or don't implement. Because the focus of the section is fiscally responsible. It's not necessarily programs or content.
You just don't come in and slash and burn your programs.
Well, you're not canceling programs out of financial necessity. You're moderating them.
Bottom line is you might have to. I'm uncomfortable with, like, if I'm going to be fiscally responsible in the top line, and then in practice, this is the detail behind it, I'm already fiscally responsible above.
How about I make financial decisions that seek to optimize services for residents?
Programs and services, I assume you.
Either way.
Yeah.
I mean, what we were after is there's a decision whether we keep a program or not. That's not meant to be part of this. It's if we've decided this is a program, then the goal was to make financial decisions that made those programs successful. I mean, that was sort of what we're, and I hear you. It's not written as well. But I mean, the idea is if we have programs and services for residents that we've agreed that are part of our goals, and, you know, this is what we're trying to get done, but then we make a set of financial decisions to support those.
Could you, use the word "consider" instead of "seek"?
Or what I'm trying to get at is, if the residents want a program and a service, we should make a balanced fiscal decision to try to get there. I mean, that principle I got, I just don't want the burden to always preserve a program and service, and I can definitely read this out of
Right, yeah.
In that context.
I think we need to change it. Do you think we need to change it?
What about Jeff's recommendation? What was that again that sounded?
I make financial decisions that seek to optimize programs and services for residents.
I still get, and I'm trying to lean into this, but I optimize, I mean.
You could optimize it to zero.
Your optimize might be different from somebody else's.
Well, that's right. And it might be that we always have to make financial decisions to go at the high end rather than the low end. So, I.
Is there an alternative that one?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure there is, actually, but I'm trying to figure out what that would be in the moment.
How do you like, consider the preservation of programs? I make financial decisions that consider the preservation of programs and services for residents. For, yeah, for residents, period.
I mean, that's a little more in keeping. I would always consider the programs and services.
Well, this is completely logical.
Right, right. So I would.
But you wouldn't pay yourself first in this situation.
And what happens if we just deleted it? I mean, are we losing something? I mean, I.
Right, I'm not sure it adds much. So maybe we circle back to that.
You know, I mean, I can think of at least three or four different programs right now that, because we're in that exact same situation, so it's very easy to, so I think that "seek" is, to preserve is too strong. But certainly you need to consider that the programs that exist, and you need to consider, you could even say, consider existing programs and services, the residents.
Do we need, I mean.
I guess I'm wondering, if we got rid of C, doesn't A kind of address that you're making decisions after prudent consideration of their financial impact? I mean, all decisions, decisions including programs and services. So if we got rid of C. Well, or just.
I think both A and B kind of covered if you pick.
So we'll just strike it?
Yeah, I'm okay.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why don't you think about it? We'll come, let's just get.
I can get through this.
And I already raised this, considering the broader regional and statewide implications. I mean, we do that as a matter of practice, but I certainly don't want my, I'm a representative of the town of Portillo Valley. I'm not, I mean, yes, I have to observe the state constitution and all of that, but I don't want there to be someone tipping the scale toward, oh, if I have to choose between the town and the region. And I want to put the housing element discussion aside because I think that's rare. I, if no one's, if our job is nothing, it's to advocate for Portillo Valley and what's good for the residents. So I really am uncomfortable with that one, 8D.
Because you're setting.
And consider.
Yeah.
You're not saying prioritize.
Well, I always do that in practice, but I don't want to be bound. I don't know what this is adding. Like, why are we arguing for state and region here?
Well, okay, so this is sort of the, you know, think globally, act locally, if you will. I mean, it was that sort of idea of that you pay attention to the larger thing. That was what the "consider" was meant to be. It's not meant to bind you. It's not meant to say, wow, you have to choose between one or the other, but you need to beware of these other pieces as well. So, I mean.
Look, it's going to be a factor if we're deciding how Portillo Valley should approach an issue. We will, of course, have to do so, understanding the state laws, et cetera, that's there. But I don't know why we're putting this in our town code of ethic. I don't get why we need it at all. Like, if we don't have it, what bad thing can happen? Or what behavior are we not? Yeah, yeah, I know, but this one striking is particularly invasive. And that's it for me.
I find this one, I actually think this one is important. I think it is important for us to consider, you know, our cooperation with the agencies around us. Not, I mean, no, it's not saying prioritize. I agree. It's not, sometimes we do have to choose our own interest over others, but I think we have to consider them. I just, I feel like it's a statement of where we stand in terms of working with the communities around us.
Well, there's one thing to, I mean, there's a relationship piece. I think I just heard you kind of refer to. We work with region, regional side, whatever, fire department, all of those. But, and this is under collaborative.
Right.
So I don't want a rule about how I have to prioritize my decision versus, yes, yes, we should be good neighbors and contribute and be collaborative. I mean, it's under the collaborative part, and I don't understand why this, I have to have a rule about how I make my decision.
So I guess I don't consider these to be rules. I consider these to be guidelines. And I think this language is just saying consider. I'm perfectly health, I think it is appropriate for us as council members to consider the broader region. I think we do that. That's part of our role when we participate in, as is required, in all of these regional organizations. We saw one tonight with the Library JPA. We have Council of Cities. We have the Airport Roundtable, so on and so forth. And so I do feel like we, that's part of our job.
How about adding to it, while serving the town? I mean, it says statewide implications of town decisions and issues. To me, it's about a balance more than. This almost talks about more of a priority to me. And, you know, in the course of serving the town, I'll consider the broader regional and statewide implications of our decisions.
Sure. I think it's implicit, but that's fine.
Together.
Okay, so you added a phrase there?
At the beginning. In the course of serving the town, in the course of, perfect. I consider the broader regional and statewide implications of our decisions, or of my decisions, I suppose it would be.
Great. Any issue with that? All right.
I, you know, it's funny how people, you see these things in their own kind of year. But when I see this, I think about how our watershed effect, downstream, and I think of all those things. How with services that we provide to the community in terms of recreation, all that kind of stuff. Not so much as making sure that I'm absolutely compliant with the regional and statewide implication.
But are you, I mean, are you okay with this wording? No, I mean, I think.
I love it.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
Great.
They're so general that one does tend to.
No, absolutely. I think it's a good discussion. So is there any other discussion or changes? Not for me either. And so is there a motion to approve? To make a motion to approve this ethics policy with the modifications, the amendments that were just discussed. Is there a second?
Yes. When do we discuss the question of how is this, how is this unique?
I think it's in there.
Well, no, I mean, this is the question that Rita brought up, right? She was asking. And so, I mean, I guess we have a motion, so I guess the question is, are there going to be a second? So, because we still have discussion before we vote, and I think we can then get to that. But I think you're right. We should have that conversation. So how do you want to deal with that?
Let's just go ahead. Let's have a discussion.
Okay. So our intent here was not to make this an enforcement policy. So, you know, this isn't meant to be, oh, well, I can go talk to dad and get dad to come and, you know, chastise you. It's like, these are meant to be things that people read through and go, okay, this is the way we want to behave. And I think if somebody's not behaving that way, that, and you feel like they're not behaving that way, then you could say, look, you know, we have this code of ethics, and it seems like you're not being respectful or gracious or whatever, and you tell that person. That's my intent. It's not that this is staff screwing me over and look at the ethics and, you know, I'm going to go to the town manager, the town council, and get them to punish somebody. It's certainly not that. Or a committee member or even the council. I mean, it was really meant to be, let's get this out there and people can go, yeah, that's right. We should be respectful and gracious. I mean, as I put in the cover letter, I mean, it was meant to be a positive statement of our values and to remind people that these are things that we care about. Rather than this is an enforceable document where, you know, we're going to come after you if we determine that you didn't follow 2A properly.
But there's a bit of a legal question. So if you adopt a policy, what if any enforcement? If you could just talk about.
Yeah, I mean, this policy is drafted to be aspirational, so there is no enforcement mechanism. But I agree with Council Taylor that it can be useful in having a conversation. And it really depends on context. If this is a staff member that feels like someone treated them disrespectfully and, you know, about this policy versus if it's, you know, it depends on the context, but I think it can be useful in our conversation.
During the discussion, and I hadn't thought of it before, but I know that many organizations have an ombudsman that if there is something that comes up, that somebody is actually given the opportunity to talk to the two people and to mediate, and that could, in fact, provide a lot of relief and the reason why. In medicine, for example, you use ombudsman. Is it great protection of the war chest? Because you can solve a lot of problems before people get mad. And I don't know, at any point, we might want to consider that if we do end up getting into issues like we have in the past where people are looking for an apology, don't get an apology, angry, all those kind of things. We could have some mechanism to discuss it without having to go to fisticuffs.
I'm comfortable with the intent and the description that Craig gave.
I think if we want to have an ombudsman or something like that, I mean, that's.
At some point, you don't need to have.
I know, but let me finish this up. Yeah, okay, that's all right. So, I mean, if we need that because we need to resolve conflict in the town, I'm fine with having that resolve conflict in the town. But this document is meant to be aspirational. I don't want to tie it to some kind of enforcement policy. I do feel pretty strongly about that. Okay, good, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
All right, so anything else on?
I just have one procedural question. I saw you taking notes in terms of all of the edits. So I assumed that you got a record of, I took notes as well, although I wasn't entirely sure where you all landed on 3C regarding the preserving the programs and services to residents.
So, do we? Shall I, yeah, we're going to strike it. So do you want me to quickly, so what I think we have here, the amendments that I think we're going to make are the, on 1D, distributing is going to go to contributing. On 1E. The unilateral meeting will go to private.
Wait, 1D, considering benefits and burdens or?
Considering.
I thought it was going to be evaluating.
Yeah, evaluating benefits and burdens.
Okay, so what's 1D?
Evaluating.
Evaluating.
Okay, so.
1D, changing the word distributing to evaluating.
And burdens according to consistent and equitable criteria.
Okay, great. So I got, all right, so distributing gets replaced with, that's right, it's evaluating.
1E is removing the word unilateral and say private meetings, replacing it with private.
Yep. 3C, we're going to strike. And 8D, we're going to add "in the course of serving the town," comma, the rest of it.
Yeah, I don't know that you need "and issues" at the end, but yes.
Which one are, which one are you talking about?
8D. So, "in the course of serving the town, I will consider the broader regional and statewide implications of town decisions and issues." Judith's suggesting we could even delete "and issues."
Yeah, however you.
I don't feel strongly one way or another.
I'd probably delete it.
Yeah, I'd delete.
All right. Okay, so I think those are the modifications.
I recorded one more, just to clarify, the unilateral meetings, were you going to change that to private?
Private, yeah.
Okay, you got that right.
Yeah, thank you.
That was, yeah, I think there are four changes. Is that what you have, Catherine?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Awesome. Now, would somebody like to make a motion? All right. I didn't know if we had to do a full redo. All right. Did we have a second? Yes. Okay, there's a second. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Alff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hafdi?
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Haskett?
Aye.
And Mayor Wannaf?
Aye. All right, thank you, guys. Thanks for your work on that. All right, so that closes our regular agenda, and we'll move on to item number seven, which is council subcommittee liaison committee and regional agency reports. Is there anyone that would like to start?
I'll add one thing that isn't in here. PV Palooza is scheduled again for June 1st. It is no longer a cultural arts committee sponsored event. It is now an event through, it is, John Bodger has formed a nonprofit which will now take over running PV Palooza. This actually makes things easier for both him and us. Corey and Carrie have spent quite a bit of time working with John to make sure he has what he needs to launch the nonprofit and sort of turn PV Palooza into a town hosted, but no longer officially town. and sort of turn PV Palooza into a town hosted, but no longer officially town sponsored event. And it's June 1st is, June 1st, yeah, is the date for PV Palooza. Another, another really impressive program. And it's, it's going to be an all-day event with, I think, 16 acts there. So it's, it's.
Awesome. Any other updates? Go.
So I attended the Woodside Fire Protection District Board last night, and they had their first reading of 2401, which is the defensible space ordinance. So I would definitely recommend that all residents that are interested go to the Woodside Fire Protection District website and, and look at 2301. I mean, 2401, excuse me. This is the rename of 2303. And, and it will have impact on the town. It's, you know, Kim's been thoughtful about it. I think there are still some issues potentially to work out. But this is the time. The second reading will happen next month. And if it's approved by the district at that point, it will go into effect 30 days after that.
Was there anything, any significant public comment? Or was it a well-attended meeting?
Yeah, I mean, it's always hard. I mean, Zoom's always weird. Like, I mean, there were, there were a lot of boxes. So it was well-attended in that sense. It's hard to tell what the number was because it was just a lot of boxes. Four or five people spoke. Rebecca Flynn spoke. If you haven't had a chance to look at PV Forum, and she also submitted it to the district. Her comment letter was actually quite long and extensive. I commented on the adjacent properties clause, which potentially would force, you know, your behavior would force expenses on your neighbors, which I found problematic. And so I, I brought that up. Several people in Ladera spoke. Because I think they're in a similar situation where houses are close together. And so some of these things that, you know, make sense when you have large properties and all the houses are far away are fine. But when you start talking about zone 01 and 2, and houses are close together, then you start getting potentially some unintentional consequences of those. And so I think that was the, the discussion. I was a little surprised that the board afterwards actually just took the comments and that was it. They, they didn't have a discussion among themselves. So I'm not sure of the next step. I was going to check in with Kim and ask her, you know, kind of the next steps. But, but that was my report.
Was there any indication that there were going to be edits to it based on that discussion? Because the board didn't discuss it or?
There were no indic, I mean.
Right, because they didn't discuss it.
I mean, so Kim's in pretty good.
Yeah.
But I don't, at this point, I mean, we're starting to get into the formalized part of the process. So there was no indication that there would be any changes. But, but there weren't any that said, no, we're just taking it the way, I mean.
Yeah.
We get, it was ambiguous in, in that sense.
Thank you.
I, I would ask that Catherine, is whether there's any indicate, whether, when this is passes, what we have to do as a town?
We don't have to do anything as a town. So this is a fire district ordinance that does not need to, unlike the fire code that, that council ratified last fall. This one is a fire district ordinance that does not need to be ratified by us.
And it's enforced by the fire district?
Yes.
So they can come around and do it.
So the Sunrise Provision Outreach Subcommittee, Mary and I, we've been getting started. It took a little while once the housing element was adopted for us to get oriented. We've made good, a good start. We've done a couple of different approaches. One is just getting started, looking at like what's in the market. Like, when do properties come up, if there's anything out there using a test case? Nothing, nothing in detail, but if a property comes up, what would need to be, what steps would need to be put in place, what's the logistics around that? And John Biggs has been helpful in helping us understand some of the practical aspects. So this is looking at the market, if properties come up that the town might want to act on or facilitate in some way. Nothing specific at all here. This is Mary and I getting, getting our thoughts in gear about, okay, if there's an opportunity, what, what are the execution points and, and how would that work? The second thing is looking at parcels and, and trying to think about who might have needs for additional affiliated housing, other, you know, who might be open to other uses of property. So this is early thought stage and initial outreach. We're taking both a proactive approach to be thoughtful about where those opportunities might lie, leveraging past committee discussions. Certainly, and an opportunistic approach if we hear of somebody that might be evaluating an opportunity or, or be willing to talk, we're doing that. But these are just initial steps. Once we go through a handful of these steps, we want to come up with a better framework for, okay, here, here's the types of things that we, we think we should put together for step two of the Sunrise Provision, which is going to be more extensive, which I think we'll be talking about in a future meeting. Subject to budget and logistical details to be approved by the council on how do we get into and really do an intensive search and start executing on some of this. We also think it's going to be very valuable to start talking with some of the affordable housing. I, I want to call it resources, right? And, and like, how would a developer be brought in? How would we evaluate different grants that might be out there? So getting some expertise in and maybe having some informational sessions is something that what we may want to bring back for discussion and suggestion. Because I think we'd like to get educated and I think a lot of the public would as well. And I think there'd be a receptivity to that, what it looks like. You know, is it a couple of hours one day? Is it a couple of different presentations over a month? I don't, I'm not quite sure yet that that, I think, can be, help us get more granular than we're currently being. So I think we'll have a more fulsome update next month. But the, these are the outreach steps. Mary, feel free to enhance.
Well, I, I'm more optimistic than, than, you know, do if I think we have done some pretty, pretty good work and opened up some potential doors and, and it's, it's that movement.
So, so when you say that, like, have, have you guys been, are there certain properties that you've been talking to and what can you share about that?
I don't think we should be sharing. We have no granular suggestions. And I, I, I think we're using test cases and exploratory discussions to see where people might have interest. And I think we're going to be reaching out and being, becoming more organized about it. But it's not appropriate to get into details at this point.
Right. But I guess, if I could rephrase, you have been talking to speci, what was unclear about your statement was I didn't know if you've been actually talking to property owners.
On a preliminary basis to see what, what levels of interest there might be or what categories of opportunities might be more or less of interest.
Without any, any commitment to any decision.
Yeah, right.
There's nothing committed.
They're absolutely, they're making that very clear.
And then another question I had was about the repository. Because I haven't heard anything about that work.
Greg, I don't know, because we, we are bringing back the ad hoc, sorry, the Sunrise Provision, the post-adoption plan element. So I don't, when we next go meet, but that, that's one where I think we just approved it. And we just have to get organized around it. So I don't know, can I just?
Well, and I think we need a planning director. Because we're, I mean, it's not going to take a lot of staff time, but it's going to take some staff time. And I, I haven't bothered to pursue this right now just because we, we hadn't even gotten the housing element approved until just recently. So I think, once we get a planning director in, then I think we can sort of frame this and then, because it really, I think it's just organizing some information there to make it so you're not having to read through 500-page packet. And on page 297, there's this critical piece of information. It's just pulling some of that stuff out in a way that people can find it. So it, I don't think it would be too complicated. But I think we, we do need, you know, planning staff to be in place.
Any other questions on that? No? I, I had a Trails and Pass Committee meeting this morning. And we'll just give quick highlights of that because I couldn't get this, obviously, into today's packet. There was just a, you know, awareness discussion about the upcoming Hawthorns Meeting tomorrow night. There was discussion about the upcoming town or planning for the next town hike. Sounded like possibly next fall. Touched on a variety of different trail maintenance issues, specifically some more, more substantial damage that was done to the bridges in Portola Valley Ranch and a few other locations throughout town. And also at Salford Trail. And, and overall, just kind of awareness outreach about people, you know, continuing to use PV Connect to notify people about opportunities on the trails where there needs to be maintenance. They mentioned that capital improvements budgeting will be on the next agenda. And they also nominated their committee officers, Fred Leach as chair, Gary Hannings as vice chair, and Jaclyn Davis as secretary. That's that.
Well, see, I could do that for.
Just if you didn't submit.
Conservation.
Oh, okay.
With, and we've met last night. And, let's see, I do have that. I, I did write it up too. Thank you for making that clear. Conservation for, for maintenance of its properly springed home and, and the spring down meadow and doghouse. And they asked me to bring that to the attention of the, you know, the secretary. Which is that they're, we're going to lose, we're going to lose a lot of momentum if we don't do the mowing, both for fire prevention and also for restoration.
Awesome. Any other updates from liaisons? Right, I will, I apologize.
No, that's right. The, and it's, Mary had it and we saw it at WPC. There's, there are continued BZOOM problems. And I don't know if they've gotten resolved or not. But it, I think the EPC had a Zoom problem. WPC had a Zoom problem. And it looks like geologic safety had Zoom problem. So I don't want to get into a discussion here, but I would ask the town manager to make sure that the IT guys who are responsible for supporting this thing are giving us the support we need. Because we've definitely had some difficulties.
It turned out it was just a password, probably.
That looks like geologic survey. It was definitely not. WPC, the PC was crashed. We rebooted it. It crashed again. It was half-split. Anyway, I don't want to go into the details. It's just, it, yeah, it was painful. It was not, it was way beyond user error.
All right. Thank you. Yep. I'll take public comment on liaison reports. No hands in the schoolhouse. And I have a couple on Zoom. First is Rita Comas.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. Today is February 28th. Tomorrow is February 29th, the last day of Black History Month. I'm glad that the town did a declaration for Black History Month. But I hope that for next year and for years to come, the town can do a, a little more than a declaration. But at least we had that this year. So I appreciate that. But let's, let's, you know, just do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. The next is a phone number that ends in 3056.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Dana Green. I, I don't know who the liaison is for ASCC, but no one was at our meeting. And we had a very powerful discussion about changes that we want to see on the ASCC. And we discussed how important we felt it was for there be some presence in the interview process for the new town planner, that a representative of the ASCC be there. I have been there two times, you know, in the past 20 years in interviews with a new town planner. And I think it's very important that the town planner sees the process through our eyes. And so we talked about a lot of really important things. And there was no one from the council there. And, you know, given that we're a commission, I, I just, I felt that was really disappointing. So we still would really like to have a presence in this interview process. As, and so would a member of the planning commission. So it has happened before. It's, we have had involvement and we would like to be there. I would actually like to know who's going to be in the, these interviews. I hope someone from the council is. And I, I've gotten no response about why we're not included. We've asked many times now to be included and have gotten, we haven't had a discussion about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Well, we can address a couple of these questions at the end of public comment. Kristy Corley.
Yeah, just to verbally say, the Hawthorne Meeting tomorrow night. A little bit more detail about that. It's 6:00. And if you want to write anything about your comments, it needs to be submitted two hours prior. You have to fill out a form prior to talking in the meeting. There is no raised hand. And you have to fill out the form and say you want to, the easiest way to do it is say, I want to talk at both public comment times. Please call on my name and you can write the agenda item. So some people are going to the meeting and they think they can raise their hand and they end up not talking. And I just feel so strongly that the public has a right to talk and write. And I want them to understand that, you know, that other organizations do things differently. And I want them to be successful at their public comment. And then I, not sure I heard anything about the recreation. I was unable to go, but what was the recreation committee feedback?
Thank you, Kristy. I don't see any new hands up. So with that, I will close public comment on the liaison reports. I just want, for, for those that are not aware, Dana, perhaps you missed this, that we were given the guidance on the commission liaisons. Catherine, if you'd like to recap that, because you'll do a better job than me.
Happy to. So we looked at the topic of liaisons to the commissions. And it was my recommendation, as well as that of our interim planning director, that decision-making commissions such as ASCC and Planning Commission don't need council liaisons. They have staff liaisons to them. And there is some awkwardness with having council liaisons. In fact, other cities actually have council rules of procedure and policies dissuading council members from attending commission meetings in order to avoid getting ahead of the process. Because those decisions of ASCC and Planning Commission can be appealed to city council. So to avoid getting ahead of the process and avoid the, the appearance of being heavy-handed with your presence. It was my recommendation and also that of John Biggs in his experience to not assign liaisons to those two commissions.
Thank you, Catherine. And to the question about the hiring of the town manager, as has been said multiple times, that's within the purview of, I'm sorry, the planning director of the town manager to hire his staff. So I think that's it. I will take a motion to adjourn. All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, guys.